First up tonight, we have the approval of the agenda. We do have two items to amend for the agenda. The first would be, we need to add approval and written agreement for Cashers Glenville, volunteer fire department for the purchase of some equipment. Do we need to put that in new business? Okay. And then, we actually have learned that with number 10, the amended Fontana Regional Library Agreement, we've got to advertise that for 30 days. So, we are going to move that one to our second meeting in December so that we can do that. So, with those two items, one addition and one subtraction, seeking motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on now to our minutes. We have our public minutes, public hearing minutes for the Colley Planning MAP Amendment, the regular session minutes, and our work session minutes. If there are no needs for any kind of adjournment or any kind of amendments to those, I'll seek a motion for approval.
Tell me, Mr. Chair.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to administrative reports. Quick reminder that I'm going to be going up to Canada Fire Department and their community building on the 20th at 6:00 to discuss kind of their needs for the community department, for the community building. So, if anyone is interested, we'll be meeting up there just discussing that at 6:00 on the 20th. Yeah. Any additional reports for commissioners tonight?
We had a, the veterans dinner last Thursday, so good time. Sheila did a good job as well as all the volunteers out there.
See now? If not, I'll turn it over to County Manager King and his report.
Did want to bring you up to speed on a couple of projects. So, the Jackson Middle School project, we are kind of heavily involved with that process. We will be talking a lot more than that over the next couple of months because we do have to kind of solidify the SOT plan. We're very close to getting that SOT plan under the Soul Borens, but we are tracking. We've kind of got a timeline of September 1st, so we've got, we've got to have a round booking by September 1st. That'll be kind of fast tracking here pretty quickly. The other one, Fairview, we've kind of reworked some of the figures for that, so we're not going to be ready to go out to bid until later on in first part of January. So, it's probably meet March LGC timeline versus the February timeline.
Is that for the roof or for the building?
This is for the building. The roof has been, what you're referencing is the hospital, and that one was bid out and awarded, so.
And when's that going to begin?
Uh, when did they say, girl? It was, yeah, within the month. That was as of last week, so. But Fairview, we're kind of backing up this a bit with some civil concerns as far as some of the storm drainage and the water. So, we're working some of the issues out before we do a full bid package. And then, the, the track will be bid out. It's, and it has been bid out, so that will be on, the bid open is December the 2nd. And we did have a pre-bid meeting with about 10 different contractors, so that one went very well. So, we're hopeful to get enough contractors that will be on December the 2nd. And so.
The track for the high school?
That's for the high school track on Jones Street, yes. We were giving y'all a, a list of Mrs.'s financial data for the library, that the process we've been analyzing a couple of months identifying all of the necessary elements to creating the Jackson County Library System. So, you know, it's kind of an open-ended, the $500,000 that was given to y'all in June. We kind of, as of today, and this report is as of November 7th, 2025, because things are changing where you're kind of identifying certain elements that we may need to purchase. We're trying to work with FRL on identifying those needs that we're going to have to have. So, so those are discussions ongoing. But, as of today, next month or in January, we're going to be asking the board for a budget amendment of $250,000, sorry, $240,000. You've already allocated to the contingency $50,000. So, for this fiscal year, '25, '26, it's a total of $290,000. And fiscal year '26, '27, it's $140,760.76. And that is based on the employee's current rate of salary plus a cost of living adjustment, bearing in mind that they will not become, they'll be in a probation period for a 12-month period starting July the 1st of '26 through the 30th of '27. Then, in year three, '27, '28, it'll be $410,456.16, and that includes a projection based on the salary analysis that's going to be done in '26 and '26, '27. So, these are all forecasts at this point. Bear in mind, they do not take into consideration any revenues, state aid, which were slotted received approximately $121,000, nor does it include any adjustments, E-rate funding. So, there is a possibility that, that those funding will come in and meet a lot of that right now, but we don't have the exact calculations based on the amount we will get pre-rate. The only number that has been forecasted is the, is the, the state aid, and that is estimate from the state aid office, and it was $121 is their estimate. So, that's the number I'm comfortable with putting out. Then, they're subjected based on expenses like your self-credit revenue, they're, they're going to be on what you're actually spending. So, when do we forecast the entire budget process? I can't really forecast the revenue on that one. But there will be additional revenue to cover the costs, so.
Will the county be looking into seeing if they need to keep all of those 26 or ever how many it was employees, if they're necessary?
Yeah, you know what? We kind of have discussed it a little bit before, you know, the transitional planning part is for the coming into it, you know, we need to keep all employees that are currently within the system. And then, after, and once you hire a librarian that's over the entire district, then during that process is when you evaluate, you know, your needs, things like that. We'll, we'll get into that part, but, but transition pieces, yeah, it, it's meant to bring in everybody that's, every physician that's currently there. So, with that said, we're going to add this to the booklet that we presented back in June as an updated form, and we're going to also put it on the website just for everybody to know where it's at, probably tomorrow. And in that way, you know, people can have access to that, so. But just bear in mind, it does not include any, any of the revenue pieces.
Do these numbers reflect benefits?
Yes, so we, in '26, '27, you say $53,856.76 in staff benefits, that's mostly, that's a 2% cost of living adjustment, and plus it also factors in the financial benefits with the insurance you can't lose, so.
And our insurance is comparable?
Our insurance is a, basically an HMO, and theirs is an HSA, which means they're a high deductible plan versus their HMO. So, our plan has co-payments, a little bit lower deductible. Their plan is a high deductible plan, which doesn't have co-payments when you go to the doctor and office, so it's not, it's not apples and oranges. The benefit, I guess, from the employee's standpoint, from their aspect, is that the library also picks up their, the employee's deductible, which we do not do that here. If we did that here, it would be about $2 million extra for that, so. So, that would be the only difference, but as far as the exception to help, here's the same thing, still across the issue, both of them, it's just a bit, two different plans, Any other question at this point? Like I said, we are working with FRL on identifying the, you know, the different things that are going to be needed, especially for, you know, the book checkout and all the different aspects there. One of the things we're going to be discussing with them is, is the, you know, Wipptotaka piece of it, which is the RFC mailing devices. They're currently owned by FRL by the agreement, so we're at the work with the vendor and also them, so we're going to be working out some details there. And plus, just as of November 17th, this, these are the numbers, so it could be changed.
Any questions? That's all I have. Moving on now to informal comments.
Trying to make the meeting shorter.
No, it's not up there. I went up there to get it, but it was gone.
He scooped it up.
Well, I mean, I can't, nobody will like it, but I won't.
First up this evening, we have Beth James.
Good evening. So, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. King first of all, because there was some information in the local newspapers that was not correct regarding FRL, and I hope that that did not come from this board. But when you voted in June, the estimation on those numbers were not correct, and there is a very good possibility that the numbers that you got tonight won't be correct. The first thing that they need is the numbers from FRL for him to make an educated decision and to go forward on what those numbers would be. So, I would appreciate for the record that it be told that there is no guarantee written in stone that Jackson County will pay an additional $500,000 per year if they assume the library. And secondly, I've had a lot of people contact me in regards to the books, and I've tried, and I've not commented on that because I am a board member of the trustees on the Jackson County side. And I've seen a lot of people come in and they speak, and they're from the school, they're from people that I collaborate with every day. But I want to give you a different side of that story, okay? So, we've got, I think it's something 4,000 kids in Jackson County schools, give or take. So, a kid goes to school, he or she sews her pants, okay? They don't recognize what's going on at first. So, then, as they start to investigate further, that kid gets on the bus with other kids, could be your kids, your grandkids, and from there, they touch that kid inappropriately or they expose themselves when they should not. And those are the kind of things that we are seeing in Jackson County. Now, can I prove that those, it came from those books? I cannot, but at the same time, it cannot be proved the other way. It cannot be proved that either way. And what we do know, what we do know is that in Jackson County, most sexual offenses, kids that are sexually abused starts in the home. It's done in the home, and it's not done by scary people. It's done by their uncles, their dads, their stepdads. And so, when you talk about protecting children, what I'm hearing from the community is that they're not asking for these books to be removed, they're asking for them to be moved. And I think that's an important thing to say tonight. So, when you go and you challenge a book, there's no clarification on whether that book is to be removed or to be moved into a separate place in the library. That's simple, and I think that the people of Jackson County know that a lot of them don't come to these meetings because they have families, they have jobs, they're at bar practice, they're at all those things. So, I'd like for you to take that into consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. James.
And you would know a lot of what you're talking about, what goes on with children because of your job.
I do.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, we have Tom Downing. Mr. Downing?
Thank you. I'm Tom Downing, I live in Colley. Here we are with three additions to the FRL agreement, ideas that apparently were not knowable when the agreement was most recently renegotiated. Number one, for the FRL board, remove a trustee from each county, replace that trustee with a sitting county commissioner, hopefully who can attend the meetings. Number two, add three new library directors, one for each county. The FRL director can only direct the FRL system up in county libraries, individual libraries. Number three, if any operational funds are unspent at the end of the year, the funds go back into the county that provided them. These ideas seem harmless enough, just to say them out loud, but I'm not celebrating just yet, because we don't need a sitting county commissioner for each county on the FRL board. The people you have already installed on the FRL are doing a terrific job of micromanaging the FRL as it stands. I attended the most recent FRL meeting, and I got to tell you, our Jackson County Commissioners, they went to great lengths to explain how they are not banning any books, which that's correct, they're not, but I think they do protest too much. I could see how it would be possible for them to rewrite the collection policy so that only neutral books are purchased in the future. So, that means no more controversial books of any kind. Of course, who gets to decide? Why, it's the trustees, of course. Creating three new director positions is an idea that is overdue. My question is, where is the extra funding coming from to pay for that change? Regarding quon back any unspent operational funds, well, that's just ridiculous. The obvious unintended consequences is that any organization that has to return unspent funds will somehow find ways to spend every last dime. The fact that a government entity saved money and did not spend every dollar they were given is not an indictment of their mishandling of funds. It shows they actually are good stewards of our tax dollars. Whoever sold you that ridiculous idea needs to take a government finance course. The School of Government has such courses. It's all the same baloney, just a different sandwich. I'm not celebrating. I'm waiting for the other shoe to drop. Regarding the FRL, this board has earned your zero credibility rating from me. I expect the shenanigans will continue in order to divert the residents' attention away from your lack of action on so many other pressing issues. Affordable childcare, you bought a building, where's the program? Workforce housing, where's the housing people can afford? Not to mention increasing mortgages thanks to your gigantic tax increase. Homelessness. I could go on, but I'm out of time.
Mr. Downing?
How are y'all? Every book is offensive to the unlearned reader. You are creating a slippery slope. I'm here to encourage you to vote for the FRL amendments, to remain in our partnership with the Fontana Regional Library. It strengthens our community and brings resources that can only come from working together with other rural communities. These amendments are the exit ramp. They will, they will reset the community relations that were afraid by the idea of withdrawing. Mr. Bryson, I recite and dispute one. I am directly asking you to vote to remain now and in December. It is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Becky Abel. Ms. Abel?
Hello, everybody. How are you? I wonder if there is some compelling reason why you, Mrs. Hooper, do not send advisor board meetings and committees you volunteer for when you were elected. Why don't you even run for the commission? A few extra bucks, doesn't that want to do the work? How about serving the people? You clearly do not care unless you can make a name for yourself, aiding the freedom of a library. And you, Mr. Smith, if you haven't thought about serving all the people, I'd be completely surprised. All of these care about controlling thought. We need to look back off here because all of you have saved, withdrawn from the FRL. That will do irreparable harm and cost taxpayers kind of money instead of doing the right thing. I really appreciate you.
Kim Mitchell.
Hey, folks. May go a few minutes over, but I hope you liked it enough to tell a little, few seconds my bonus. One might be, hate could be defeated if in sound of right wrong, revealed in closeted skeleton or played that one unplayed song. One might be exposed, but dark isn't beaten by adding more dark, and repeated blows won't soften a heart. We're opposed, but I can't dehumanize those who dehumanize me. Only adding light to the dark allows us all to see. We're all wrong, if not in this tune, then in a different song. So, I'm going to do what I've requested all along. I'm going to love and do unto my neighbors as I love and want done for me. You made yourselves unfavored, I made you my enemy. A truth revealed to me when it's some words of my last poetry, one among you smiled, exposing your humanity. Whether or not in your hearts you find the common ground on which to change your mind, I'll still ask your forgiveness and give you mine and keep trying until I see you only as my neighbors. And until we give each other freely the forgiveness Jesus asked of God to save us. Thus, the thought occurs to me that to view each other truthfully and in honor of Thanksgiving, I'll simply view you as my family. Not so difficult, really, for though we love each other fiercely, their words leave me crying sometimes, too. Todd Bryson, you could be my son. You gingers are a fiery lot, but anyone who's ever loved a ginger knows under the flames is a protective heart. Miss Jenny Lane, respect, was the tone of the tall man's voice when he called you a firecracker. You demonstrate a strong woman's might. Some aunties show up to heal with a hug, some aunties you bring to a fight. Each powerful advocate is equally loved, both sometimes wrong and sometimes right, and capable of magic unstoppable, reinventing what's possible. When they work together... when they work together with the same goal in mind. For in the fighter is the love of a hugger, and in the hugger is the heart ready for a worthy fight. Michael Jennings, I believe we've yet to meet. You appear to me as one who prefers the backseat. You stand for the tribe who is valued as much as the chief, standing stronger with others on your own feet and your own belief. You stand for those in the family who may not stand out but show up to hold the load up, to share love and help out. As for you, Mr. Smith, I can't see past the eyes. You reveal I'm still a center. But I can say one thing nice. If I were disappeared by eyes, you'd be the distant kin I'd want called in, provided you aren't busy driving the van. Jokes aside, you give the vibe of a family man. And finally, Chairman Ledbetter, I owe you an apology for the times I called out to help out. I was wrong. We were all more spirited that night, the tension strong. You were the closest I've seen. You'd esteemed through it all. You've kept calm, even killed, difficult to read, honoring the tradition of the intentional neutrality of your seat and easy to misjudge for those of us who still struggle to eliminate that flawed trait of our human character. I salute the respect you've shown the chair and most especially, the gallery. So at this Thanksgiving dinner, I give you the seat of my mother's father, little known and misjudged by little me as kind of mean and scary and gruff, but to his daughters and others who knew, he was strong, fair, and dearly loved. Least I forget I'll share a picture of me. I'm the family's favorite Auntie Kimmy, loving, weird, not frequently seen, and absolutely who you'd call without a doubt if you're ever in need of an advocate with a brain and a mouth.
Ms. Mitchell? Uh, next we have Mr. Blaine, Keith Blaine.
Uh, Commissioners, I did not come here to, uh, to attack you or yell at you. I just want to share some information. Like the first speaker, Beth James, you know, I was very concerned about the wrong information that was provided back in June. We're getting new numbers tonight. I've not seen those yet, you know, um. I'll review those tomorrow and give you my assessment of that. What I do have for you is an agreement with, uh, our county manager, King, that the state aid, which we will, we will receive it as long as that form is filled out, submitted in January of one hundred and twenty-one thousand. That is every year, year after year after year. There's two of the categories that we'll also receive revenue from. I would like to see that in the report. Uh, twenty percent of the fines and fees is held back by the F R L. So that comes up to a little over thirty-nine hundred dollars. And then there's a sales tax refund, which is eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty for a total of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. That would be received every year, not just a one-time deal like the I T cost. So also, I want to mention a couple of other things, uh. Couple of other things, the, uh, uh, the funding for the library from Jackson County last year, there was a net surplus, that's ninety thousand dollars. That was just, uh, provided at last, uh, F, F R L meeting. Also, uh, in the F R L general fund, there is two point five million dollars. And the financial policy from the F R L states that the general fund should contain a minimum of twenty-five percent of the annual F R L expenses. The expenses are four point two million dollars. Simple math, twenty-five percent of four point two million is one million and fifty thousand. Yet we have two and a half times that much. Not one million and fifty, we have two point five million dollars. So I think we need, need to take a hard look at the document that's coming out. I saw a lot of things in it that were not numbers, but that were, were false. So what I'll do, give me a day or two, I'll provide some feedback on that. So I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Blaine. No more informal comments from the public. We will move on to our consent agenda. First up tonight, we have Ms. Fox with our financial report for, uh, October of twenty twenty-five.
Good afternoon. Go over the highlights for October. The general fund revenues collected to date is thirty-two million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. That's thirty-one point oh five percent of budget. The expenditures are at thirty-three million, three ninety-five, four oh four, which is thirty-three point oh five percent of budget. The revenues at the end of October were four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven eighteen, less than the expenditures. We did reverse the accounts receivable that were posted to F Y twenty-five. That amount was seven million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight fifty-two. The ambulance taxes collected are at forty-three point forty-six percent of budget, at twenty-four million, six twenty-two, nine eighty-four. The motor vehicle taxes, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, six oh two, sixty-three, which is twenty-six point sixty-four percent of budget. And the prior year taxes are at twenty-four point ten percent, at a hundred and twenty thousand, four ninety-four. We received a sales and use tax refund for F Y twenty-five, and it was four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six ninety-three, thirty-five. And that does include project sales, too. The sales and use tax distribution was two million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. That represents July sales, and that amount is eight point thirty-nine percent more than we received in October of twenty-four. The Article forty-six distribution was two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five eighteen. So the average right now is eight point thirty-nine percent for the fiscal year. The landfill disposal fees, one million, seventeen thousand, six twenty-two, that's thirty-one point forty-eight percent of budget. And the prior year disposal fees, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The growth revenues were following. The code enforcement, environmental health, and registered Ds are all over the percentage where they should be at the end of October. The general fund contingency balance at the end of October, one million, one thirty-six, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Be glad to answer any questions on the report.
Questions from the board regarding the report? We'll move on to our budget amendments. Ms. Fox?
Have three budget amendments. The first one is general fund. It's an increase of one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. We did receive an additional distribution from the A B C board of seventy-seven thousand, five seventy-five, eighty. The Blue Cross Blue Shield grant for a hundred and ten thousand, five ninety-two. That was for the D S S building to install a sprinkler system. We had three Great Smokey, Smokey's Health Foundation grants for the Health Department and one via health. Then there's a transfer to Economic Development Fund, one million, one eighty-seven, twenty-one dollars. And that will, the balance out from unbalanced. The second amendment is for the Economic Development revolving loan fund. We received from Mountain Biz Capital, the principal that we had sent to them earlier, of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And the interest on that is ten thousand, four seventy-four, fifty-nine. They didn't make any loans while they had the money. And the third one is Economic Development Fund. It's an increase of one million, one eighty-seven, oh twenty-one, and that's for childcare property acquisitions.
Questions from the board about those, uh, budget ordinance amendments? We'll move on to the project capital ordinance.
The capital project ordinance is for the Jackson County Detention Center project. It's the amount for construction, seven million. The total's eight million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. And that will be from lease proceeds.
Any questions regarding the capital project ordinance?
Thank you.
Um, moving on now to tax collector and refund reports for October.
I got one quick question. What's a lease? Where do you get the lease funds from?
Okay, the current taxes collected for the county, um, were three million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Delinquent taxes collected for the month were thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Um, the total collected for the month of October was three million, seven hundred, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. There were refunds of two thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-six cents, and releases of twenty-two dollars and six cents. Any questions? Thank you.
Brooks? Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? A second? All those in favor say aye. None opposed. Moving on now to our new business and the, uh, twenty-twenty-six census test.
Good evening. Um, my name is Kristin Nesspoli. I'm a partnership specialist with the U S Census Bureau. Typically, I work with the county manager for this, but I wanted to have a moment just to get in front of all of you. Um, so thank you for letting me on the agenda. Um, you're probably wondering, why the heck is she here? It's twenty-twenty-five. Well, even though the census is five years away, we conducted a test in twenty-twenty-six, um, in preparation for the twenty-thirty, uh, just to see what works, if it doesn't, check out new technology, um, new methodology, that sort of thing. So only six areas in the country have been selected to participate, and Western North Carolina is one of them, particularly, along with Jackson, Swain Graham, and Cherokee. Um, the area was primarily selected because in twenty-twenty, there was low connectivity, and because of the Helene, there's a high vacancy rate. So that's why this was good for, we wanted this one in the sample. Um, we are going through the whole thing like it was for real, from recruiting, hiring, uh, online response, follow-up, um, self, you know, people knock on the doors, all of it. And so right now, we're in phase one, and we're hiring. Um, it starts at twenty-six fifty an hour, so it's not too shabby. Um, but I'm having a really hard time getting that number in front of everyone. I think if people saw that, they'd be more, you know, interested in, in, um, joining us. So I need help. I'm trying to find, um, places where I could get this pushed down on social media, any recommendations of, of, um, events or certain nonprofits that would really be helpful in helping us get the word out. Um, I've been making the rounds, so you might see me around. I was just at, um, W C U, and then today I was at Southwestern Community College. I've been to N C Works job fairs, but they're still a little slow, not quite where we want them to be. So I did want you to know that I'm around, this is going on. And, um, do you have any questions as of now?
Yeah, just in case if we tell people about this, where do they contact you at? And also, is it, can they work part-time, or does it have to be full-time?
It is a hundred percent part-time, actually. They can work up to forty hours a week, a minimum of two. And it's completely flexible, so evenings, weekends, their own, they make their schedule.
I just didn't know when I said full-time, if it was like eight hours a day for as long as you.
Right. Yeah, and that's a good point. I should actually say it's also from January, February to about July, so it's temporary as well. It's, there's a Q R code where if you take, um, applicants right to the place to fill out online. They don't need resumes. They just have to answer some questions, pick the positions they're interested in, submit it. They just, over eighteen, citizenship, vehicle, and there is a background check. Um, so yeah, so that's about it. So I did want to just sort of put my face out, because I'm gonna be around a lot. But thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have, uh, Ms. Tucker in our annual report to the citizens.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. I'm here to present our twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five annual report. And this is put together with every single Jackson County employee, and it highlights every single department. So basically, the actual copy will be distributed throughout the county, the chamber, town hall, places like that, every county building. And it basically goes over just key accomplishments that we've accomplished over twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and our priorities and goals for twenty-six, community initiatives. Basically, our budget revenue for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, expenditure breakdown, efficiency improvements. And it gives a huge community impact section. There's lots of pictures of our public safety, our social programs, education, health services, and community engagement. And then looking ahead, we've got all the capital projects in here, our policy goals, community opportunities, and our future public participation and things that we can do for the future to get Jackson County more involved in what we do every day. And you can, you each have a copy, and there will be a digital copy online as well, so anybody can look on it as of tomorrow. Any questions?
I did want to say something as well. Um, Carrie and, especially Carrie has done a fantastic job putting this together. They've, they've done a great job this year, and we kind of just want to showcase exactly what we're doing uh, and be as transparent as possible with all our different programs. So this is, this book reflects that, and so they just did a fantastic job here in Bill.
And each page, there's a page, two pages for each department, and it goes into great detail on, you know, every, our day-to-day, what we do, how we're involved in the community, has, you know, code enforcement ideas, economic development tourism, gives all phone numbers and phone numbers and everything at every county department. So if you had somebody moving here or just somebody that doesn't usually know or use some of those departments, it's all in here. So this is just your guide to Jackson County.
Thank you so much.
It's, it's a nice-looking catalog.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on now to, uh, Webster Village memorandum of understanding, and Ms. Henry.
I got so focused on her and her presentation because she did such a good job, then I forgot I was next. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank y'all for having us on the agenda. I've got in front of you, this is a Webster Village joint venture agreement, and we've talked about this project a lot. Again, this is the Webster Village Housing Project that involves several different partners. And we've come to the point where it's time for us to put together a formal agreement with the partners that are involved. So as we work towards the infrastructure, we have something more formalized in place. We know who's doing what and how we all work together. And so this is a formal agreement that is between Mountain Projects, uh, the Givens Estates, Givens Communities, Western Carolina University, and Jackson County. And just as a reminder, this is a forty-eight acre tract of land in the Webster community. And this project brings together senior housing, affordable housing, and workforce housing for, you know, addressing some of the housing challenges that we're currently facing. And I just, this is, this is a great example of where partnership and collaboration is coming together to address some of those problems. These projects don't happen overnight. They take a lot of time to get there, and this is, this is a great example of that. We, I've been working on this since I started in my role four years ago. We're still not even broke ground yet, but we're getting there. And it's really, it's also, it's frustrating, but it's also inspiring to see all of this coming together. This is a transformational project. So this is an agreement I have in front of you, and I'm just asking for your approval to move forward with it.
Can you, real quick, I know you've went over it before, but can you go into the, uh, the amount of apartments and the, uh, senior housing for the senior family homes, single-family?
Yeah, so the Givens Communities portion is a hundred and twenty units, and that's senior affordable housing. And then Mountain Projects portion is approximately thirty-three, single-family homes. And then Western Carolina University is workforce housing. The total number on that is yet to be determined. We estimate that we can fit about eighty-four one, two, and three-bedroom apartments on their, their portion of this property. So all in all, we're well over two hundred housing units. So all in all, we're well over two hundred housing units.
And didn't we uh, we, didn't we fund like one point, five?
Yeah, Jackson County, you were gracious last year. You pledged seven hundred and fifty thousand last year and seven hundred and fifty thousand this year.
For this project.
To this project. And we also recently um, asked for your permission to apply for the CDBG NR uh, for infrastructure, which was submitted the end of October.
Yeah, that's a great job. You've done a good job on it.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the MOU? Show move. A second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on now uh, with Mr. King and to set a joint meeting with the Board of Education.
Kind of going back to our report, we are engaging a lot of different projects. So we wanted to get with, get the architect, our contractor to a meeting. Uh, we're just gonna ask for um, availability for January the twenty-second for a joint meeting between the Commission and the Board of Education and to hear the, and to hear all the statuses of each project and kind of where uh, some of the pitfalls, some of the things we're working toward and um, that maybe we can come up with some, some game plan for, for the future parts of it. So anyway, does anybody have a, his twenty-second, a good date?
One second, works for me.
Thursday?
Yes.
So we'd have a meeting Tuesday and then have that one on Thursday.
That's fine with me. Correct.
When are we gonna back out at SEC?
I don't think we've decided yet. It'll probably be SEC or a, probably SEC if we can get it. If not, it'll be other school facility.
Is that great? Is there a motion to accept June or January twenty-second?
Show move.
And a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on now to our license agreement with Vision Cashers, Mr. King.
So basically, this is just a license agreement for them to place sidewalks on a portion of the county property. Um, located next to Cassius Lake. And so this is just a license agreement. John has, has went over this and everything is uh, uh, above board as far as the, the definitions and the exhibits. So I would recommend that you consider this as a license agreement between Vision Cashers and the county.
Questions from the board? If not, I'll seek a motion for approval.
Show move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. All right, moving on now to our approval and rent agreement for uh, Cashers Global Volunteer Fire Department.
So this is just a document, uh, basically as a taxing authority, by IRS regulations, you have to give consent that um, they can borrow funding or borrow money for a fire truck. And so this is just a document that authorizes the chair to sign the documentation for them purchasing the fire truck as the taxing authority.
Any questions from the board?
No move.
And a second, make a motion to approve.
A little early.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. All right, moving on now to legislation. Uh, we've got a resolution for establishing the dang- dangerous dog review board. And Mr. King.
So this is just a piece of legislation that enables the Health Department to secure a dangerous dog review panel. By state statute, the Health Director is in charge of declaring a, uh, an animal dangerous or potentially dangerous. And so then the rights of the citizen, uh, this enables the citizen to basically have an appeal process um, to go through and, and talk to other people. I think if this one failed, I think it does go to a judicial uh, hearing. But this is kind of a segue to that. This kind of helps, helps the, the citizen uh, through the process of, of their, their issue, so.
Is there, uh, are there any questions from the board regarding this?
Yeah, do we really have that many issues with that?
Uh.
There were a couple last year.
Yeah.
Other than, I know.
Yeah, most counties, even if they have animal control, they have a potential dangerous dog um, board set up. Uh, individuals that, you know, are kind of in, not, not necessarily the industry, but more in sync with, you know, judging. Basically, it's what you're doing is you're, you're basing the information that you're given. Um, I don't know if it's come up in recent years, but here, but I, I've been exposed to that in my career before with that.
Do you have any kind of requirement for, for being a member of the board?
No. No, that I mean, they're, um, they've been, I mean, it could, could be anybody. I mean, you just have to be a reasonable person. You know, that, that's gonna hear the evidence from both sides and kind of make an impartial decision.
Any additional questions? If not, I'll seek a motion.
Well, I mean, how, at what point do you say that a dog's dangerous? I mean, you know what I'm saying? If you go within its territory and it's guarding its house.
Well, we had, last year we, one particular, one, I'm not gonna name names, but we had one that the dog got loose, kept one of the other person's property and attacking a sheep and then attacking their dogs and, uh, so I think.
One that attacked a child over a weekend. So I mean, I, I think.
That's a dangerous dog.
That's a dangerous dog.
Yeah.
Well, going to an active house is, is a nuisance.
Right. And, and this just enables the appeal process. The, the dog's already been, you know, that's the Health Director's responsibility about, you know, declaring it potentially dangerous. This is giving the rights of the citizen to have somebody impartial hear their case and make kind of a determination.
Yeah, 'cause there's a whole system. It goes through a certain amount of days.
Yep.
All with our animal control.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve this uh, resolution?
Show move.
And a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Broson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Leeson?
Yes.
Moving on now to appointments. And there are quite a few of them. Um, first up tonight, we have our ABC board. Uh, currently, uh, David Nolan and William Hunley are on the uh, have applied to be on this. David Nolan is a reappointment. Uh, he's served on this board for many years and has done a fantastic job. Uh, William Hunley is new, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Nolan. All right, is there a second?
Michael Jennings had said something about he wanted to be on it. Here, he don't want to be on it. No, he said no.
Doesn't know.
Okay.
Is there a second for Mr. Nolan?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on now to our um, Agriculture Advisory Board. We've got four seats available. Uh, currently, we've got three reappointments. I know some of these have just started, uh, like Ms. Kelly, uh, is in her first term. All of those that are available are Desiree Albella, Abella, Jason Boston, Nathaniel Darnell, Edwin Neil Dawson, Joe Ga- Grassie, Mary Catherine Harvey, and Lisa Kelly. So from this list, we reappoint Ms. Kelly, Mr. Grassie, and Mr. Dawson. We still have one available from uh, your district, Mr. Bryson. And that would round out the entire advisory board seats.
So they need to be on each district?
Yeah, so there's two, yeah, on this one, there's by district. Um, so in District One, there's two.
Three.
No, two. Oh, is there three?
Ms. Harvey, uh, Mr. Darnell, and Mr. Bryson.
I don't have that one, I don't believe. Hmm. Not requi- William Shelton's not requesting a report.
So he didn't, he didn't want.
Uh, yeah, I guess she picked. Mr. Darnell? What do y'all think? Yeah, I think that would be logical.
So is there a motion to reappoint uh, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Grassie, Ms. Kelly, and appoint Mr. Darnell?
Shouldn't be easy.
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on to Airport Authority, um, we've got two seats. Seven applicants, two are reappointments and they've both decided to uh, that they would like to serve again. Uh, Mr. Boyer and uh, Mr. Kamenker. We've got new applicants, Daniel Allison, Gary Boyer, I'm sorry, not Miss Gary Boyer, William Bryan, Robin Garrett, William Hunley, and Kevin Lansdowne. Are there any motions for any of those individuals?
Hmm, I'll make a motion for uh, Mr. Boyer. I'm not sure for one of the seats at least. And then, and it looks like ended, is that, how do you pronounce that?
Kamenker?
Kamenker. He's. Well, yeah, then I think we should deport somebody else to make that motion.
Now move the.
Reappoint Jason Kamenker.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on to our.
Does somebody actually use this?
Do we need to, uh, is there a second for Mr. Boyer?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Yeah. All right, moving on now to our America Two-Fifty Committee. Uh, we've got one seat available. We had one withdraw. Of those individuals, we've got Brandon Core, Bill Davis, uh, Mel- Melanie Garofy, uh, Travis Lewis, Brandon Montez, and Todd Vineyard.
Mr. Davis, or yeah, Bill Davis.
He'd be a good representative from the county.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
That's, yeah, there's just one appointment?
Once.
We have one left.
We have one left open.
Oh, I'd like Travis Lewis.
Yeah, Travis Lewis is a good version too. All of them, I'm sure are good people.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Davis. Is there a motion for Mr. Lewis?
I make a motion for Mr. Lewis.
Okay. Is there a second for Mr. Davis? Is there a second for Mr. Lewis?
He's got me in a hard place.
Yeah.
I know both of them well.
Yeah, I'll second, um, Mr. Davis.
Okay. Any discussion? Not, I'll seek a motion. Or I'll uh, all in favor?
So who's this for?
This is for Bill Davis.
Bill Davis. This is our first time with this.
Ah.
With all these.
All these names, yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. All right, moving to our um, Businesses and Industry Advisory Committee. We've got uh, one seat available. It is for Mr. Gates. Um, he has been, or I'm sorry, one seat available. We've got two applicants, William Bryan and David Gates. Mr. Gates has been serving. Uh, is there a motion for either one of these individuals?
Make a motion to approve David Gates.
Is there a second?
Show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Moving to our um, Cashers Planning Council. We've got two that need to be reappointed. There are seven seats available. Uh, Mr. Homolka and Ms. Zachary, I'm sorry, Dr. Homolka and Ms. Zachary have been serving. Um, it's been kind of a, a slow board recently with downzoning, as most planning committees are. Um, so if there's no objection, I'd like to make a motion to approve both individuals.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed.
I believe Michael had expressed interest in the Cashers Planning.
If he was on the Cashers, there's, there are certain criteria for Cashers Planning. They have to be within the commercial zone. So he would just need to talk with Mr. Poston. Um, is, is there a conflict there? If Mr. Jennings was on, I mean, because eventually anything that comes before us is done there too.
The criteria.
Yeah.
You have to own property on a business or live within the district boundary. So one of those things.
I made this.
But that's what the ordinance, that's what your ordinance currently says.
Okay. All right. Moving on to our Cemetery Board. We have five seats available. Uh, Robin Garrett and Sarah Lynn Hanant, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, anybody. Uh, are both up for um, are both applicants. If there are no um, objections, I.
Hang on. Is they not reappointed? Did uh, on the Cemetery Board, did Randy Kay, Billy Bryson, and Steve Luper not reapply? Oh. Anyone to vote for?
We had, had a couple for District Two as well, aren't we?
I forget, she, she met District Two.
Yeah.
But District Two spot is available?
Yeah, it's not. It's twenty-seven.
Okay, so no votes there. If anyone would like to be on the Cemetery Board, we have available spots in District One.
Three, Four, and the Historical Society.
Historical Society, okay. You can come join me on the board.
Moving on now to the Community for Long-Term Care. We have five app, we have five seats. We have one reappointment, one new, and two that are not ready for appointment but are new.
This is the one they had to go do the training on?
Correct.
Yeah.
So with that, we have Stephanie Bank, Dr. Mary Farrell, Sarah Lee Hanant, and Teresa Sutton. So I think probably our best course of action here is to allow for Ms. Hinton and Ms. Bank to be uh, appointed and to wait on Ms. Farrell and Ms. Sutton's.
Teresa Sutton?
Mm-hmm. Appointments. They're training, so. Is there a motion for Ms. Bank and Ms. Hinton?
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Council on Aging, we have five seats available. Um, we have a reappointment for Ms. Coffey and a new appointment for Ms. Allison. Is there?
Both from? One. Are they both from deals, bro? I make a motion for uh, Debbie Coffey.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Moving on now to our Colorway Planning Council, we have one at-large reappointment, and it's Karen Candle. Um, is there a motion to approve Ms. Candle? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh. None opposed. Moving on to Historic Preservation.
Some of you folks from Colorway wanna be on the Colorway Planning Council, see Angie.
Um, for the Historic Preservation, we have three seats available. One is from District Two, and one is, two of them are at-large, so. Meister. Okay, Ms. Meister is asking to be reappointed. She leaves us two seats, we have Ms. Kelly, we have, uh, Norrie Muse and Michael Moore.
Uh, and Ms. Levyay not reapply?
Michael Moore for the at-large position.
Second.
Um, is there a second for Pamela Meister?
Second.
Um, we've got one more seat, uh, between, uh, Norrie Muse and Lisa Kelly. Is there preference? That would be for the at-large, uh, chairman spot.
Okay.
Hmm.
And it's between who, Lisa Kelly and who?
Norrie Muse. Um, I'll make a motion for Ms. Muse.
Second.
Since we have seconds for Ms. Meister, Ms. Muse, and Mr. Moore, is there, uh, all in favor of those three individuals?
Uh.
None opposed. Moving on now to Planning Board. Uh, we have eight seats available, uh, this evening, so we've got Keith Blaine, Susan Bogartis, William Bryan, Mary Catherine Harvey, Rhodey Humbert, Lisa Kelly, Cheryl Osborne, Simon Ward, Robert Young.
Who was it? Which board was it?
We have eight applicants.
We have. Which one?
And we got four positions?
We have eight positions, nine applicants.
Oh, that are- One, two, three.
How many of them reapply?
Um, we've got one reappointment, and that is, uh, Ms. Humbert from your district. We have an additional spot from your district.
Correct.
Yep. And an at-large, do you have a preference between Ms. Bogartis and Mr. Bryan?
Oh, well, in the district, right? Um. Probably Mr. Bryan.
Joyce Cooper not reapply?
Ms. Cooper's not eligible, she served for two consecutive terms, so, uh, she'd have to, you know, rotate off before fire.
She's good.
Well, with those-
District One.
We've got Ms. Cooper not- Humbert is the, is, is reappointment.
That's yours.
Mm-hmm.
And then Mr. Warren said Joyce Cooper not reapplying, you have Mary Catherine Harvey, who is a reappointment,
or, uh, I'm sorry, a new from your district.
So there's two. Humbert and Harvey. I say Mr. Humbert.
He's, he's been there, so, Ms. Harvey is-
Be the other one, huh?
Would be the other.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve Mr. Blaine, Mr. Bryan, Ms. Harvey, and, uh, Ms. Humbert?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed.
That leaves us with-
Still haven't.
District Two.
District Two. Uh, we would like to see two from District Two. With someone.
We need a, we need another one for at-large.
And two for District Three, right? One for Chairman.
Yep.
One for Dist- or two for District One.
One for District One. So we need one more additional.
Thought you done both of those, Humbert and then the other. That's my format. I'm done with that.
And then we did Harvey for your appointment.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so one more additional, at-large one, and two for at-large three.
Or at-large two.
Yeah, two.
Two from District Two.
You could have fixed these.
That's saints. Moving on now to Library. We've got three seats available. We've got two up for reappointment, uh, Beth Paris James and, uh, Lauren Baxley. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint those two. All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, which leaves us with one seat remaining. Uh, the applicants we got there are Patsy Allen, Keith Blaine, Chris Bogartis, Susan Bogartis, Rachel Bridgers, Jane Enron, William Hundley, Karen Johnson, Antoinette McQuat, Walter Roland. Just make sure I have them. Yep.
I'd like to nominate Keith Blaine, he's worked hard on that.
I'd like to- Any other nominations? Done two, we've got one remaining.
You gotta have one more.
All those in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Okay. Moving on now to Parks and Rec, we've got five available seats. We have four reappointments in Megan Cagle, um, Adam Holt, Jason Bureau, and Tom Waterson. Is there a motion to approve those four?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Um, so with that, we have one additional. We have Walter Roland and, uh, Chris Bogartis. As our candidates, is there a motion for war, one of those individuals?
Just Bogartis would be, would be Humbert following, right? So, the only, that only leaves us with-
Walter Roland. Alright. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Roland?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, none opposed. Moving on to Region Eight Aging Advisory Council. We have three seats available, we have one reappointment. Uh, Sandra Book- Brooks, Charlotte Cohen is the reappointment, and Cynthia Gallinger. Uh, is there a motion to approve these three individuals?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Going on now to Cement Control Appeals Board, we have two seats, both are reappointments, Barry Stevens and Alex Stillwell, is there a motion to approve both?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Alright, moving on now to Solid Waste, we have three spots available. Uh, we have one reappointment from Mr. Smith's district, uh, Betty Fody. Is there a motion to approve Ms. Fody?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed? Yep. Alright, moving on now to, um, TDA, Tourism Development Authority, we have three spots. We do have to select a chair tonight. With the breadth of knowledge that Dale has, uh, I make a motion to approve Dale as the chair.
He already on the board?
Yes.
His name's not, where's his name?
He's over on the board. Yes.
There you go. Oh, I flipped too many tabs.
Dale Collins.
Second.
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, alright. Moving on to our appointments, uh, we've got John Falk from North Jackson, uh, Jason Kamenker at-large, and then we have two from South Jackson, Anne Marie, uh, Nowitzki, and Douglas Brett Stewart.
It's the TDA recommending, yeah, John Falk.
But they're other same. Yes, they recommend, uh, John Falk and Jason, and then for us, it's a decision between Anne Marie and Douglas.
Anne Marie and who?
Douglas Stewart.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for John Falk, Brett Stewart, and Jason.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Moving to Transit Authority, uh, we have three seats and two availabilities. Uh, I'm sorry, two applicants, one is a reappointment. Christian Morelles and Kevin Tafoya. I'd like to see if there's a motion for either one of those individuals, or both of them.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Moving to, uh, Tuckasee G Water and Sewer Authority, we have two seats. We've got Keith Blaine, Stanley Bryson, Bruce Allen Farmer, um, as applicants. Is there a motion?
There's two that are open.
Two seats are open.
Bruce Allen Farmer, Keith Blaine, and who's the other one?
Uh, Stanley Bryson.
I make a motion for Bruce Allen Farmer.
Okay.
I make a motion for Keith Blaine and Stanley Bryson.
I'd like to make a motion for Stanley Bryson and Bruce Allen Farmer.
Second.
Is there a second for Keith?
Uh, second.
Okay, so we've made a motion.
We, we probably do these one at a time.
Okay.
Let's do these instead of doubling up.
Alright. Well, I mean, I don't, we may have to postpone and wait for Michael.
Maybe so.
We don't have a, an odd number.
Yep. Uh, Alan Farmer, he's, you can tell he's employed by Twosha, uh, from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-nine, so obviously he's got some experience. And, let's see.
Stanley Bryson worked for him too.
Yes, I mean, I feel like those two advocates, nothing against Mr. Blaine, but
having a little bit more experience.
Yep. Stanley D. Bryson.
I don't have an application for him, but.
You don't mind?
I don't think Tracy Rhodes had any experience. I mean, that's just the name it does say. I mean, even like Tim Paris, they're on the board, they didn't have any experience.
Yep, I think it's always gonna need some little bit of experience.
But we can table it for Michael, cause Michael's over here, he can, he can't vote, but he-
Can't vote, yeah. Let's table it to Michael.
Let's table it, alright, we'll table Tuckasee G Water and Sewer to our December second meeting. Or, what's our first meeting in December? Lost myself here. See? That went quicker than what I thought. With, uh, any questions from? We do have a need to go into closed session tonight for real property and, uh, legal. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor?
Uh.
None opposed. Give ourselves five minutes.
Coming out of closed session, no action was taken. If there's no, if there's no further business, I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
Sub move.
And a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, we are adjourned.